It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, September 9th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. Your very one would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to a flag of the United States of America and to a body for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. The first item is approval of minutes. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is claims. Mr. Pettis?
Good morning.
Second. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Anyone from outside the county that would like to come before the court at this time? What's your item number? Please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, my name is Catherine Gompels. I work at Border Region Behavioral Health Center, and we're here for proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month.
Okay, that's item number nine.
All right. Whereas, in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 12.3 minutes, with 47,173 deaths by suicides in our country during 2017. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for 15- to 24-year-olds, and is the 10th-leading cause of deaths for people of all ages. Each person's death by suicide innately affects at least six other people with 200,000 newly briefed each year. We work at Border Region Behavioral Health Center. It is our local mental health authority here at Starr County. One of the things we want to make sure that our community knows is the importance of talking of suicide and starting a conversation to provide support and directing help to others who need it, and to also prevent suicides and save lives. Evidence has shown to providing support services, talking about suicide reduces access to means of self-harm, and following up with loved ones who are just some of the actions that we could all take to help others. Today, we want to recognize mental health awareness, but more than anything, Suicide Prevention Month. Tomorrow is designated as World Suicide Prevention Day, and throughout this week, we are doing different things in our community. And therefore, it is to be resolved, we do hereby want to designate September 9th, 2019, as Suicide Prevention Month in the state of Texas, and urge Texans to learn more about how they can help, because suicide prevention is everyone's business as a community.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Under discussion, I just want to thank you all for the work that you all do in our community and the county. I'm very familiar with the work that Border Region does, and I know a lot of times, it goes unnoticed, but we do thank you. This is, I won't say it's an epidemic, but it's certainly a very concerning issue that we have in the community, and we thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Judge.
All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Take a picture.
Everybody's wearing purple, because it is Suicide Prevention Month, so that's our color.
We can put some chairs if it can be.
Just kind of get close to each other. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, thank you all very much. You're certainly welcome to stay, or if you all need to leave, that's fine, too. Moving on with our agenda, we have our reports. Gas Department, Mr. Alvarez.
Good morning, Judge. My report is on your package. I won't take too much of your time. I just want to highlight the annual audit that we had in August from Railroad Commission. We did very well, better than most years. They only had three concerns, which will not add up to a violation. The outside audit, where we deliver the delivery system, did excellent. We didn't have a single violation. And the other mention is our volume loss is still at a very low level. I'd like to give kudos, credit, where it's you, and that's my staff. They're doing an excellent job on the outside. Any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. Transfer Station?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. The report is before you. I don't have anything to add, other than that we've already finished the purchasing of equipment that we acquired through a grant, and now we're just going to wait for the reimbursement. If you have any questions on my report, I'll be glad to. I need the Commissioners to help me. Commissioner Science and Commissioner Alvarez, I need both, yes. And I was waiting for us to get some rain, that way, you know, you could put your equipment out there. Okay. Thank you all so much.
Any questions? Thank you. Tax Assessor, Ms. Alina?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My report is in front of you. The total countywide collections for August 2019 were $442,160.10. In August 2018, there were $384,488.83. There was a total collections of $58,117.27, more than last year. Year-to-day, we have collected $307,027.247.3 less than last year. Since 2018, taxes became delinquent as of July 1st. Total year-to-day collections for the Starr County entities remain $13,491,480.80. This year, the tax office collected $51,880.48 more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for August 2019, just for Starr County, were $281,873.27. The total delinquent collections for August 2018 were $148,364.10. There was a total collection of $33,590.17, more than last year. Year-to-day, we have collected $280,980.61, less than last year. As of July 2019, there was a total of $274,485.52 of projected current collections to be collected. In August, the tax office collected $91,121.85 of 2018 taxes that turned delinquent on July 1st, 2019. Remaining 2018 projected taxes to be collected are $175,363.77, or 1% of the projected collections. Do you have any questions?
Any question? Thank you, Ms. Alina.
Thank you.
County Clerk, Mr. Gonzalez?
Morning, Judge.
Commissioners. Good morning.
It's a lengthy, well, not too lengthy, but I'm not going to go over each one of them. I know we have a long agenda here, but I will highlight that our filings for the month of August was 805 new filings. So our total due to the Treasury, with all the different line items, is $40,172.91. So we did have a good month in August. We're continuing to improve the office. We did have a training last week with Experian for what we're going to do with those deeds that we need to file and stuff. We're going to go ahead and continue with that, that almost project, to get all those deeds in there, and kind of based on what we can find as far as addresses, we're going to send out letters, and then from there, you know, we'll process to the appraisal district and then to the tax office. Hopefully, we can get all these filings in there.
Those are the deeds from the receivership?
Yes, yes. Those are the ones that were from the previous administration that had stayed there, a little bit over 120 of them, so.
Right.
We're going to get them in, so you might see a little off for this next month, September, where we're not going to have so much in collections, because we're going to put all these new filings in there, but we should take care of it within the next month or so. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Court. Total revenues, projected revenues for August 2019, projected to collect $570 from the City of Grande, $360 from the City of Roma, $1,500 from Jail Solutions, $11,150 from the Marshal Transport Services, $328 from the medical services, from the Marshal Services for the inmates, $144,880. Hidal County Sheriff's Office, $146,796, for the total revenues of $305,684. As of September the 4th, our federal inmate count was 89, our Hidalgo count was 81, and our local inmates for Starr County was 78, for a total of 248 inmates for that day. The monthly average was 85 Hidalgo, I mean, federal inmates, 79 Hidalgo inmates. There's a difference of $52,490, more than the same time last year in August 2018. Total revenues projected to collect at this time is $2,863,222. And that's our, that's the report so far.
Okay.
What was the estimated budget that we put in for the jail?
I think, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I think it was around 2.3 years.
2.58 million.
2. what?
2.58 million.
2.5, that's what budgeted for, that's your budget, that was your budget?
Correct.
For expected revenue from the jail, right?
Yes, sir.
So we were, about 300 and some, another, this is only two, September, we still got all these months to go, right?
That is correct.
Another 300,000, 2 or 250?
Hopefully.
It should be, we should end up with close to half a million.
Or half a million.
Somewhere near vicinity.
Hopefully. The Hidal County contract went into effect on the 6th, so we started charging $60 on the 6th.
Yeah.
And then with the Marshal Services, as you know, it's 55.
You know, every month, Chief, you know, I keep commending you on the work that you all do, because the numbers reflect that, you know, that you all are doing a heck of a job. Let me also inform the public and the Commissioners. Last week, Commissioner Science and I were there, they came to inspect our jail, the inspector came down, and she's a tough lady, you know, in inspections, and, I mean, all she had was praise for Mr. Molina and his staff, and of course, the sheriff. The sheriff, I mean, the jail passed with flying colors, so we're very proud of the work that you all are doing.
And it was a surprise inspection, there was no heads up. She normally comes out late October, late October, so it was very surprising that, you know, she came. Her inspection starts September the 1st, so it was very unexpected.
She did bring up some items that are going to be required, that are not in the budget, but we do have some monies that, some boxes for the prisoners where they need to store their things, things like that, but I think all those are manageable.
Yes, sir.
We can handle them.
Yes, sir.
So again, congratulations to you and your staff, and to the sheriff.
Thank you.
The sheriff, I'm sure, Robbie, we could have myself, doing a good job, and he's doing a good job.
I'm sure, well, the sheriff's done a tremendous job, I mean, the relationship between Hidal County and the Marshal Services, I mean, it's doing very well, plus, you know, the district attorneys, the county attorney's office, the judges, I mean, it's all working together.
Yeah, you know, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank them, because the reason we're able to have this type of numbers of federal prisoners and Hidalgo County prisoners is because the prosecutors and the judges are working very well with, and getting the prisoners that don't need to be there for more than 10, 15 days, they're getting them out, they're processing them, so that's helping us out a lot, so thanks to them also.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge.
International Bridge? Good morning.
This is a report for August 2019. Total revenue from traffic is $182,928, and we show a decrease of $25,104 for the month of August 2019 compared to the month of August 2018. We show an increase of $5,808.50 on the collections for the month of August 2019 compared to the month of July 2019. We have other collections of $48.33, and the grand total collections is $182,976.33. Do you have any questions, sir?
You know, our revenues continue to decrease, but that is, those are things that are beyond our control.
Yes.
You know, people are just not coming across, or going across, because of the instability that we have in Mexico.
Yes.
We can't control that, so.
Don't be like that for a while, then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Treasurer, Mr. Gonzalez?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. You have my report for the month of August 2019 in front of you. If you could just follow along with me. The ending balance for the general fund is at $2,370,799.76. In 2018, at this time, it was at $868,046.8, for a difference of $1,502,753.68, more so than last year. The road and bridge, the ending balance is at $309,350.67. At this time last year, it was at $155,281.8, for a difference of $154,069.59, more so than last year. For the enterprise fund, the ending balance is at $787,000. In 2018, it was at $1,099,539.52, for a difference of $302,418.69, less than last year. For the drainage district, the ending balance is at $981,652.85. At this time last year, it was at $694,452.83, for a difference of $287,210.2, with 2 cents more so than last year, which brings the grand total for the ending balance for 2018, it's at $4,458,924.11. At this time last year, the grand total was at $2,817,319.51, for a difference of $1,641,614.60, more so than last year.
Mr. Gonzalez? So, based on your report, we have collected more taxes, more revenues coming than last year?
That is correct, yes.
So I thought we were short on the road and bridge, yeah?
I think the auditor will get into that, right?
Because based on the current collective taxes, we already at 90, what, 90 something, 1%? Ms. Alina said?
It was the 97% projected.
Yeah. I'll go into that in the next report, Commissioner. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Pettis, auditor?
Good morning again, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners. The auditor's report is for the month of August 2019. You've got that report in front of you on page one. It reflects the reconciled balances of the First General Fund at $2,155,971.54, the Road and Bridge Fund at $98,943.85, and the Payroll Clearing Fund at $494,269.95. Part two reflects the expenditure report for the general fund as of August 31st, 2019. As a percent of the year elapsed, as of August 31st, 2019, 335 days have elapsed, or 91.78%. In summary, the general fund amount expended year-to-date is $17,47,505, or 91.85%, slightly above the 91.78. Breakdown of the departments, several departments are reflected at the bottom of page one and continue through page two. The departments exceeding the 91.78% are reflected in bold. On page three, part three reflects the expenditure report for the Road and Bridge Fund as of August 31st, 2019. In summary, the Road and Bridge Fund amount expended year-to-date is $5,057,585, or 81.32%, falling below the 91.78% of the year elapsed. Below that, you can see a breakdown of the numbers for some of the departments within the Road and Bridge Consolidated Fund. The remainder of page three and continue through page four, we have a year-to-date summary of the revenue reports for the general fund and the Road and Bridge Fund. Year-to-date revenues collected are $16,602,471, or 89.42%, and $5,482,403, or 88.15%, respectively. Page five reflects a summary of the revenues and expenses for the enterprise funds as of August 31st, 2019. The International Bridge reflects revenues of $2,180,393, with expenditures of $1,836,35, an excess of $344,358. The gas operating system reflects year-to-date revenues of $987,239, with expenditures of $847,528, an excess of $139,711. And finally, the solid waste transfer station reflects year-to-date revenues of $1,272,95, with expenditures of $1,411,946. It's a deficit of $139,851. And finally, page six reflects a summary of the debt owed as of August 31st, 2019. The total current balance is $2,041,715. Any questions?
Yes, what Commissioner Gonzalez was asking about, on the road and bridge, the availability of cash is about $100,000.
Correct.
That's what we have. Normally, Commissioner, what we would need to finish out this month would be around 200, 250,000. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. So it seems like we might end up short. Of course, there are still monies coming in of taxes and fines and whatever, but one of the problems that we have is, and I don't know if Ms. Alina is going to touch on that or not, but the state has been receiving funds for the plates, the motor vehicle division, of monies that were missing when the previous administration that was there, and they have been sending letters to Ms. Alinas that they want that money. That money was sent to them, of which I disagreed with, because if we're going to be partners, we need to share in the profits and the losses also. However, those monies have been sent. Ms. Alinas and I met with a lady that represents the state on that, and I emphasized my frustration with that, you know, that they want to be partners only on the profits, but they don't want to be partners in losses. And she said that, yeah, she understood that she was going to talk to her boss and see if we can get that money back, maybe not in payment, but in credit. That was 275,000, or thereabouts?
275,000.
Yeah. About 275,000. So if that money had been sent, that's Road and Bridge money. Road and Bridge would currently have around 300, between 350 and 400,000, which would be more than enough to finish out the year.
And how long would it change, was it said or was it changed? Did they automatically deduct it, or they just, you had to, you sent the payment to them?
No, we sent out the payments to the state every month, because we generate the report and specifically states what the amounts to be paid to the county. But in order for us, back in the days, the state was not required to send out letters to the taxing entities to let them know that the payment was being late, until four years ago. So I have these letters, which the first one that we received was not in my knowledge. So now, later, I received this letter and said, why are we paying late? The payment will be late to the state, and because we were getting, let's say, August money, September money was used to pay August. So that was not, I didn't like the idea, I needed to be at zero balance, so in order for me to be at zero balance for that month, I would have to hold the payments to the county, which can increase to four to five, four and a half months of payments to the county. That's where the money goes to the Road and Bridge, that's where the money is going.
Yeah, we're, we're.
But after we had the agreement, the.
So we're still paying the money that was actually missing, the county.
Yes, and that's where, that's where I take issue, Commissioner, because, see, those are monies that we lost, that were stolen from us.
I understand.
It was not, it was not monies that we didn't collect, so I feel the state should have shared in those losses. And the lady, you know, that came down, she didn't agree, but she says, I understand, I'm going to take it to her boss and see, you know, if we can negotiate those amounts. What I told her was that what I will plan to do is instruct our tax collector not to send any more monies that belong to us, you know, and if they, you know, we'll see what the courts say, because it's just not fair that we're going to absorb 100% of the losses when they're partners with us.
Right, I agree, and I think we should stop paying.
We should ask that we'll be sure, right?
Yes.
We're sure that, that amount.
See, because we're, we're paying.
Okay. Mr. Pettis and I have been talking, thank God, we have a surplus in general, and we can move from general to road and bridge, so you're going to see, yeah, an amendment or a correction in budget or whatever, to move whatever monies are lacking from general to road and bridge. But again, that's the reason for the shortage.
And Judge, I agree with you, I don't think we should send any more payments. And, and I agree with you, I don't think we should send any more payments until we get to, to an agreement with, with the state, because, you know, I mean-
The law should be provided proportionally.
Exactly.
Right. But I'm gonna wait up for the state to, to respond to me and see what the agreement is, and then I was going to expose it to you, but since, uh, since now we're missing that money and we need to know where it is, you know, that, that's why it's-
They're, they're gonna, you already told them that you, we're not gonna pay them, you're waiting for, for a response?
No, no, no. We had, we had a meeting, the judge, myself, and the state, and I disclosed the, I exposed the situation, the money was missing, and, and I don't know for when. So, uh, we have, we have, we have talked about it, and we need, we need to come to an agreement as to how much we are going to pay now, the state is gonna pay portion of it, half of it, whatever the agreement is, and I would, after I get a response and an answer from them, I was going to expose it to you, but now, you know, I don't have any, any answers as to when is it gonna start, if the state is gonna pay or not, how much it's gonna pay, and, um, when am I gonna start to, you know?
To reduce the pay, reduce the payment, you understand what you're trying to say? When you get an agree, when you get an answer, and they, you say they agreed to pay a certain percentage, that you're gonna reduce their payment that we're gonna be sent to?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but if that agreement doesn't happen between now and, and the next payment to them, I feel we shouldn't pay.
Well, I agree with you, yeah.
You know, because we've already overpaid two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
But, uh, I'm not willing, starting this, this month, to get a portion for, for, for the payment, you get only a portion of it. Starting October, we'll start fresh, and, and I'll be making the payments to the county, to the state. I don't know how long it's gonna take for this matter to resolve with the state, but I can guarantee you that from this, this, uh, October on, the office will be running clear, up to the end.
Yeah, let, let me, let me just clarify one thing, the, no monies are missing from Ms. Alina's administration. These monies that were missing prior.
They're trying to charge, charge what was, was stolen?
Yes, yes, and, and, and Ms. Alinas has been sending them those payments that, that were supposedly short, but those were our monies that, that belonged to the county. So, you know, hopefully, you know, I don't wanna send any more money until the state comes in and says, well, this is what we're gonna do, and if they don't like it, let them send letters, let them do whatever, you know, but I just don't think it's fair that, that we pay one hundred percent of all the losses.
The judge has to give you a format.
Yes.
And I agree with you, I thought this, this, this account should have been solved when the case was, was closed down, when the prosecution-
Well, and, and, and that was part of what was discussed, you know, the lady says, why don't you go after the, the bonding companies, and I said, we did, but we cannot get anything because the monies were contaminated. You have a bond, why didn't you go after them? You know, you have the same obligations that we have. Uh, so I don't, I don't think they really have any, any legality, and Mr. Gonzalez is here, to collect our money, you know, they lost it, they lost it. They were overseeing the operation also, so it wasn't only us. Uh, but again, uh, I, I, I just don't wanna send any more money until we resolve this thing.
Any other questions on my report?
Sorry about that, I'm, okay. Okay. Okay, and, and under my report, the only thing I had was the, the jail inspection, and, and we covered that. Uh, moving on, the vendor's list, Mr. Pettis, or?
Uh, yes, the vendor list has been reviewed, the first amendment-
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item seven is the, to adopt the county-wide burn ban. It, it has expired, and things are nice and green right now, but I wonder how, how long-
I second, Your Honor.
Okay, then that's who-
Enforce it?
On that?
Go ahead.
That's to enforce?
Yeah.
Motion to enforce, okay. I have a motion, a second, to, to adopt the county-wide burn ban, discussion?
We need to enforce it, you, you see the problem that we had in the venue?
Yes.
We need to really enforce it. There's a lot, a lot of enforcement agencies that can, agencies smoke and then go through it.
I, I totally agree, Commissioner, that it must be enforced, and then, of course, fines need to be imposed.
Yes, sir.
Uh, any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item is to approve the 2020 sheriff and constable fees.
Morning again, Judge, Commissioners. Uh, Judge Beda brought us, brought up to our office a couple of weeks ago for us to check with the, um, sheriffs and constables' fees to see if they were in line with the state. We did confer with our county attorney, and we did look around the state, and everything seems to be in order, or we're respectfully, uh, asking for approval, keeping everything the same, Judge.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. Item ten is, uh, to approve a lease payment in the amount of a thousand dollars from Eggo Site.
Moved and second, motion.
Moved and second, all in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item, uh, eleven is a loan request for PO number eleven, seven, two, three, seven, in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eighty-five dollars. Uh, Ms. Ibarra?
That is correct, Judge, uh, we are on a reimbursement basis, so we are requesting this loan.
I second, Your Honor.
Can, can, can I ask you to amend that motion and second, to read, uh, that you approved pending availability of funds?
Okay, I do.
Is that okay?
I second, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, okay, I have a motion, a second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item twelve is an action item, and this is to approve a bid for, um, I guess it's a house in Falcon Heights?
That is correct, Judge, the previous contractor, uh, provided, uh, documentation that he was not able to, uh, continue with, uh, the project due to financial reasons, so we-
The contractor was a two-hundred, right?
That is correct.
It's a new contractor.
It's a new contractor, the Y and A construction is the new contractor, yes.
How much time are you gonna give him or whatever?
How much time? Depending on how much we have time on the contract.
All right. To turn it down, did?
That is, yeah.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you, Judge.
Moved and second to approve, discussion.
No, sir.
All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen is another loan request from General Fund for PO eleven, seventy-three, sixty-eight, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents.
That is correct, Judge, again, this, this grant is also on a reimbursement basis.
I second, Your Honor.
Pending availability.
Okay, and the second is also-
Pending availability.
Okay, uh, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item fourteen is to approve, um, the contract amendment for family and protective services contract, Mr. Gonzalez.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Um, what this is in reference to, this is, uh, the CPS attorney that, uh, I have working out of my office, and one secretary. What it is, uh, depending on the number of children that are in placement, that are in, in the system essentially, um, we, the state has a formula which they determine a reimbursement rate for the expenses that we pay, uh, the county pays, to proceed with the CPS cases, with the children that are in, in, in foster care. It does not cost, it does not cost, kind of, any money, in fact, we get money back.
Have a motion, a second, to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen is an action item, and this is to submit a proposal to TDHCA for Colonia Self-Help Center Program in the amount of seven hundred thousand.
I second, Your Honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen is to approve a refund on parcel number two, zero, zero, six, zero, in the amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-nine cents, to an adjustment from the appraisal district.
Is this a reduction in value?
Okay.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen is an action item to approve 2019, 20 motor pool and general maintenance agreement between the two twenty-ninth DA's office and Jaime Sepulveda, these are discretionary funds.
Moved and second, discussion.
All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Items eighteen through thirty-six are budget amendments, Mr. Pettis, are they in order?
Uh, yes, I believe you've got those in front of you as well, and all, with the exception of a couple of them, but, uh, we've, uh, changed up, and we should have those changes on the report that have been reviewed and recommended.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
To approve, ask corrected?
Ask corrected.
Motion to approve, ask corrected, Your Honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item thirty-seven is a budget correction, Mr. Pettis?
Uh, yes, that item as well, I have to review and recommend.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thirty-eight is a discussion on possible action on tax abatement for Las Lomas Wind Project, Ms. Benavides, I saw you walk in.
After a second session.
Okay. Uh, okay. So I've got ten forty-five in pursuant to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, five-five-one-point-oh-nine-four, five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one. We'll go into executive session to discuss order of salaries, personnel matters in Justice of the Peace Precing Two, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, purpose to hire an attorney for cost number DC nineteen-three-eight-two, and also action on cost number DCO two-three-one-three, and, and cost number DCO three-oh-three-fifteen, and, one more. Uh, is to revise status on hiring an attorney for a case on Orlando de Carmen Peña individually on behalf of State of Marco Antonio Muniz for wrongful death. So we'll be, we'll be back shortly. It's, uh, eleven forty-five, and we're back in, in open session. There were several things that were discussed. First one was order of salaries, is there a-
I move that we approve the order of salaries, Mr. President.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, Rose, I'm sorry, I, I skipped yours. Uh, item thirty-eight?
Twenty-eight, sir.
Thirty-eight, yeah, that's a possible action on tax abatement in Las Lomas Wind, I guess we need to authorize Rose to negotiate.
Motion for, uh, to allow Rose to start negotiations with, uh, Starton Industrial Revenu, Revenue? Industrial Revenue, no? Industrial Foundation, revenue, no?
Second motion.
No?
Yeah, no, aye.
Yeah, no, aye. Javier.
Okay, I have a motion, second by Commissioner Andrade, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item we discussed was the Justice of the Peace Precing Two, uh, it was, uh, just informational for the judge, I don't think any actions needed on that. Uh, the next thing was, well, the economic development negotiation, and that was with the Industrial Foundation, that was already discussed, and, and then we need, uh, on the section for DC nineteen-three-eight-two, the county attorney will answer that for us, that lawsuit, so, do we need a motion for that, Vic?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the county attorney to respond.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then the other one was two items, one was, uh, the possibility of hiring an attorney for cost number DC zero-two-three-one-three, and cost DCO three-oh-three-fifteen, they're, they're the same, they're consolidated, and, uh, then the other one, it's a separate case, and this is a wrongful death claim, uh, if you all would authorize me to negotiate with attorneys.
Yes, Your Honor, I would make a motion for item number forty-three and item number forty-four, to allow negotiations between Star County Judge Vena into negotiations for those matters pertaining to item agenda forty-three and item agenda forty-four.
Second motion.